Okay, I'm gonna open the budget session of 11:13, 2014, Thursday evening at 6:00, about 6:08. Supervisor Limata possibly might be back. He's digging out someone out in 5:10 as we speak. Trustee, Trust God, I have not heard for hers, heard from her, but she's excused this evening. And we will pick up back on our fee schedule. And I guess we have the fire department here and Public Works. I guess I'll open any more questions up from the board to the department heads.
I guess I have one for Kirk. If up the sky came in tomorrow morning and said, "We're gonna start. We're gonna do our first phase roughly 25 acres or so." What, what does that do to the water department? What do you have to do? How does it affect you? Would it be the next year before you to actually feel the impact?
Well, if they came in tomorrow with, like, turn your microphone on. I'm not getting you for some reason.
Stand by.
No, I've got it.
If they came in tomorrow with a site plan, which they haven't actually given us, I mean, they've given us some artist surrendering of what they're planning to do, but the, if they came in tomorrow, it's my understanding that they would be extending water and sewer mains to their development. And if they were just doing the first phase out of who knows how many phases, three or four, whatever. First of all, they would definitely take, the state would have to approve the permit application for the main construction. That would put us into next year right there. And then assuming that they would start construction as soon as they got their permits, I'm gonna say at a minimum it would be, the fastest possible would be like the middle of next year.
Fifteen?
Yeah.
Middle of, okay.
Yeah.
So, and I think that's the only real big project we've got in the works, according to Jason, that, that he could talk about anyway.
Right.
And whether that, I guess they're going to court on the 20th or whatever.
Yeah, the biggest project that would've had an impact would've been the hospital. And, of course, they're not coming here now, so basically up the sky would be next in line. But, you know, people are, you know, things happen. I mean, but basically I can't plan on something that, you know, I don't even know about.
Yeah. Just trying to, I wrestled with this back and forth. I, I don't have an answer. I don't have a, I'm trying to justify a small increase to the residents. It's not, it's not a huge impact for what you're asking for. I don't agree with the idea of trying to get somebody in so early to train them for people that we don't have a retirement date for. I just, I can't get my arms around this yet. I don't know. And that's the only thing that I could think, what's, what could be coming that would just totally compromise you, that you'd have to have one or two extra people? Now, I know your reasoning for having them is more to be preemptive and to do the maintenance and that kind of stuff, and then use those people to be able to cover the retirements or, or days off or anything like that. But we've had, what, two years in a row of mild summers as far as water usage, so our purchasing's down. That doesn't mean the equipment doesn't need to be serviced and maintained, even though you have less revenue coming in. This is just, I, that's the same thoughts that keep going through my head. And I guess, like I said the first night, I, I need some concrete justification to hire somebody else, one or two people, and to raise the rates. And that's where I am.
Yes, Pete. Or Manager Gerard.
I just wanted to make one, one comment here. The amount of water that we sell really has nothing to do with staffing, not at all. The amount of water we sell has nothing to do with the infrastructure that needs to be maintained or, or cared for.
No, the revenue side of it is all.
And, you know, and that's realistically, the rationale for Kirk's recommendation for the addition of one staff position, and my support for that is, is just that, is that we have infrastructure that is not being maintained and is not being serviced the way that it needs to be based upon what we have right now for staff. Two people in the water side, two people on the sewer side. That's what we've got. That's our staff. If there's something happening in both systems, that's what we have. We've got four service workers and one crew leader. So, so we're not getting to the valves, we're not getting to the things that need to be done to maintain the system. And that's the purpose for adding the additional position, is to provide the ability to do that. So, it also has somebody basically available to move up as, as people leave. They would come in as a service worker at the entry level, which is where we bring new service workers in, and they move then up, up to a full service, full service worker as they attain the certifications. So, that was, that was it, just Kirk.
Thank you.
And I, I've got one more comment. You know, at, at your next board meeting, there's gonna be yet another budget amendment that's gonna be required as a result of additional expenses that we've incurred, not related to the winter freeze. You know, things are happening, as I've mentioned before, at a more frequent level now, and they're happening in the older part of the system. Okay, so we're experiencing more breaks. So, in other words, there was another service line break a few weeks ago that we just got the bill for today. And that bill, of course, doesn't include our own forces. So, and that's happening more and more frequently. So, in other words, my budget is, is really conservative in terms of anticipating, you know, I kinda look at the history, okay, and just kinda do an average, but it, it really does vary from year to year. The point is, it, it's kind of snowballing now. It's accelerating.
So, what do you, what would you say your percentage of those problems are of the whole system? Do you have like 10% of it that's old and it's gonna start being bad, or 30, or 60?
Oh, the total system? Oh, yeah, it's like, probably close to 50%.
And it's age, right? Because they've...
Yeah.
Okay.
And that, and again, that was pointed out in the reliability study that, for the water system, that we conducted just last year. So, and, and even the, the expansion, you know, the, the new demands, you know, there's stuff that, that I've been budgeting for, and we've been trying to accomplish, but we're not borrowing money, so, you know, we're having to pay it as we go. And, which means I can't do giant projects, but I can do smaller incremental projects. And now, again, things happen, okay? So, the, the road projects, the road plan that was just approved, that you just got mileage for, okay, that's gonna accelerate that schedule. And I'm not even sure I can keep up with that. And, and the new construction takes personnel too. So, in other words, we've got engineers, we've got contractors, but obviously we have to be involved, you know, in helping to manage a project. And when people connect to the system, which is the whole purpose of, of doing these projects, okay, again, that's our responsibility to help them achieve that, that hookup. So, again, you know, there're just not, not enough manpower or person power to accomplish everything that needs to be done. And, and it just keeps coming. Just, I think, two weeks ago, we were informed by the road commission that they are going to have another major project next year, which everybody kinda knew about, but they're gonna reconstruct Ontario Street. Okay? Next year, they're only gonna do from Werner to Allen Street. Okay? That's gonna impact the water and sewer department, mainly the water department, because this study that I, that I referenced just now, the reliability study for the water system, addressed the needs, future needs of the original system, and a big one is a new transmission main down Ontario Street. Okay? At this point, that hasn't even been on any of my projected plans, you know, 'cause I just got the study last year, haven't even plugged it in yet. You know, so, again, my point is, it's kind of, it's just like the weather. We're getting more frequent extreme events. So, it's a good thing in terms of it's being, you know, it's, it's caused by the increase in, in the demand, which is coming from development, you know, population increase. You know, we're the only growing community in the U.P., which is a good thing. But the point is, I mean, that's, it requires effort, you know, to maintain that and keep that momentum going. And the effort, of course, comes from people.
Treasurer Johnson, any, any questions for Superintendent Page?
Yes. Some of the things I have, and what I ask for is information as to justification for everything. I got this list of what the responsibilities are. That's great. That's only one side of the coin. The other side of the coin is, why isn't it getting done? There's nothing to tell me why this is not getting done, other than we need more people. Well, that to me is, is not sufficient for me to, to accept. And I can't see any reason to accept it until someone comes up and tells me in writing the justification for doing it. You're talking about, oh, let's go with the grinder pumps. You're talking about X number of grinder. How much work was put on grinder pumps in the last year? How many new were put in? How many were pulled out? How much repair time was put in? How many hours are put into it? These are the things that you need to come up with.
Right.
And I go back to looking at the companies I work with. These are the things that they needed to make decisions. If I came forward and just said, "I needed more money for this, more money for that," there was no way that they would even consider me in that. So, and then I looked at the one, when the question was raised, why increasing $1,000 for prepaid taps? And you talk about the material for, is pressure taps, valves, grind, everything else. There's no cost associated as to what this cost has been for the last three to four years, how this increase has gone up. So, you have to do it. Just to say you need it because of these, that's, that to me is, I can't go out and talk to the people in the township and tell them, "This is done because this," they're gonna ask the question is, "Why? What do you have behind you that can justify this?" So, those are the things I have for me in that.
Okay, well, the, the cost of those materials is what I was getting at there. You know, they've increased.
Okay, but I don't have anything in front of me. You're saying it's gonna take all this, but you've got to have some type of project management tool that tells you how much these things have increased in the last three to four years, so you know what it is and that. And these are the information that you need to provide to me, at least. I don't know about the other board members, that's up to them, but...
Okay, I was just talking about the tab. It's not a prepaid tab, it's just a connection permit fee, okay? Which is, like I said, includes the grinder station, the electrical cable, the power cable, the grinder control box, concrete pallets. Doesn't include labor. I'm not even talking about labor. Just the purchase of those materials are over $5,000.
Okay. How much is that increase?
And we can't keep, you know, we can't keep doing that.
Okay, that's fine. But I need something in writing to show how this has increased in the last three to four years, how every one of these items have increased in time. So, this is called project management, managing a project, what it costs for all the incidentals for all the way down the line.
Yep.
So, you can prove all this. But to me, when someone sees a $1,000 increase, they ask, "Why?" And you say, "Because of these things." And I'll tell you, you get someone out there that's been in business, that's put up budgets and everything else, and they're gonna look at it and say, "That don't mean anything to me. I have to have some data behind me as to why you can justify it."
Okay, well, you know, the board discussed the work study program before, okay? It takes time and money, and you yourself admitted it's normally a waste of time. I can provide you with data. It's gonna take time to produce that data, and what's gonna be the end result?
Are you telling me you don't have...
It's gonna be the same thing I'm telling you right now. So, what, what's, what's the point?
The point on point.
I can, I can produce the, the increase in cost over time, but it's gonna take time to do that, you know?
You should be having that as you do these projects. The project should go through. Look at what happened when we built these buildings. All the construction people came through and everything was laid out as you go through. These are the things you have in a project management. You go through all this. And I do that because I had to do that in the companies I worked for. I hadn't had any choice on it.
Okay, I think we're talking about two different things, but I was just talking about the tap, the connection fee.
Doesn't make any difference. Taps, you want people, you talk about why you justify people because of the water system I got from the water operator, and I'll be honest with you, that should've came from you rather than from one of the staff persons and that. So, I'm not happy camper with this at all and that. And I can't go along with people. And right now, for you to have an increase in either water or sewer rates, I have a very difficult time even moving there at all. But, those are my feelings at this point in time. And, so, you can take it for what it's worth. I'm not moving forward on it until I get some real concrete data behind me, because I know there are individuals in the township that have talked to me about some of this. And why do they need it? I can't give them an answer, other than that, well, they say they need it. That's no, that's no answer to me. That's all.
Any, any questions for the fire department or Treasurer Johnson? And excuse me, Lynn, did you have any questions for fire department?
Um, that was just uppermost. That's why I started with water.
I'm sharing the wealth here, so...
That's okay.
I guess we'll start with trustee Durant, if any questions of the fire department. And we'll go Public Works, Fire Department, Public Works, so...
And Cher.
So, they don't have to sit here and, they're getting a little, into the action here.
Actually, I think all of my questions were answered. I guess the question that we're gonna have, the biggest one for them is gonna be whether or not we're gonna continue the contribution and at what rate. And I guess that's what we're just gonna have to decide. Yeah, I don't have any specific questions. Thank you.
Okay, Treasurer Johnson?
I think most of mine answered, though. A lot of these discussion was on the proposed new code, new rates and that, and they say we've been doing it, but yet there's really no data saying that where the money goes or anything else. That's some of the concerns I have at this point in time and that. So, and some of it, I'm really concerned with putting it out now and letting people know and new businesses coming in and that, so... I think that's the biggest concern I have.
Go ahead, Bob. On the new, the rate schedule and the fees, we set up a spreadsheet that, for every invoice that we send out for plan review, any tickets we, we write is another spreadsheet, and then any rescue calls we go on is another spreadsheet. So, so anytime something's sent out, it's marked down, the date, when it's received, the payment, and where it goes, and you'll be getting a corollary report of that.
Will that also include like the new construction fire code review proposed?
Yes.
And all that will be there?
Yep.
So...
So, when it's sent out, we'll, we'll track it all the way back until it gets to Dulcie, takes, or Andrea, you know? So, when the check comes in, it will have a account number on it, and she can put it in that account.
Okay. Because all of a sudden this appeared before us, never seen it before, and all of a sudden it's there and that, so... You may have been doing it, it may have been working fi- well, fine, but all of a sudden we have, at least I haven't been aware of it. I don't know about other board members or that at this point in time.
Well, some of it showed up there and some of it hasn't. So, this way we, we'll keep a closer eye on it.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, I don't have any questions for Kirk. As I'm a water worker myself, I do understand a lot of that area. So, I have no questions for Bob or Dan for the fire department either, 'cause I, everything's acceptable there. The question of the public fire protection charge, I will turn to Manager Gerard, he has some new information on that, and I will turn it to him at, at this time on that subject.
Well, it's not really new information, but it's additional information. You know, as all the board members and, and the chief recognize over the last several meetings, I think the discussion revolving around the public fire protection fee, how much it should be, whether it should be paid or not, whether the fire department should participate or not, basically led to the township supervisor doing a little research into the history of it, and came up with some information, did some calculations and suggested what, what an appropriate fee might be. There was, to address the question of whether it should even be a contribution from the fire department, he requested a, an opinion from MTA's attorneys, basically to determine if it's appropriate or not. There was some question about that. He had got a preliminary, preliminary letter opinion back and forwarded that back to them indicating that he wanted some clarification. We expect to have that back for your meeting on Tuesday. And I suspect that that's gonna be in the form of a attorney-client privileged communication from the attorney, so we're probably gonna put it on as a closed session for discussion on Tuesday's meeting. But that's basically all that there is at this point. I had the, the preliminary opinion that came in, I had forwarded it to Chief Sims, and we had talked about putting together some, some proposed revisions to the budgets and opted not to go in that direction until we have the formal opinion back. But I do believe that Supervisor Limata asked clerk, asked Kirk Page to demonstrate basically in his budget what impact that would be, 'cause there was a question about if, if that money was transferred or increased to the Public Works Department, what would that do potentially to the water rate fee? So, I think he's done that calculation. Did you bring those with you, Kirk?
Yep.
Okay, if you can pass those out to the board.
Yes, Bob.
What amount are we talking here, the increase?
Well, the figure that Dennis was throwing around was 80,000, I, you know, total. 60,000 more than the 20 that's there, and that was what he asked Kirk to do in his budget. Not saying that that's what's going to occur, but that was the data that he had used and came up with that calculation.
And, you know, and...
Not saying that that's what it's gonna be, but that was the figure he threw out, and the question was, what would that do to the rates if that was the, the dollar amount? So, that's what he asked Kirk to put together, just to answer that question for you. Not saying that's where he's going or what you're gonna do, but what, what if any impact on the rate to the residents would it have if that occurred?
So, basically, I just changed two numbers. One would be the public fire protection, and that's in red. I just gave you the, the one sheet of the budget, which covers that. Everything else is exactly the same. So, the revenues from sales got reduced by $60,000, and the public fire protection number increased by $60,000. And then the narrative, again, it's just the narrative addressing, which is only the first two pages addressing those two numbers. So, basically, the, in terms of the rate impact, it would reduce the user charge or the per-unit rate from $7.11 to $6.11. Let's see, did I keep a copy even? $6.11?
I think $43.
Forty-three.
Yep.
See, what bothers me now is I got this from Kurt, and he's aware of possible $80,000. Has the fire department been notified that they may have to redo their budget, so they could provide something to us, to us tonight too, with an $80,000 decrease in their budget?
Well, this was a question you had with the water department at the last meeting. What would that do to your rates? And that's what he put together to answer the question.
But the flip side is, if you can do something on one side, it makes sense to go to the other side and say, "Hey, if we're gonna take $80,000 out of you, what's effect is gonna be? I don't care for this bit of just doing portion of it."
This is answering the question that was asked at the last meeting. It wasn't what impact would it have on the fire department, it was what impact would it have on the water rate to the residents? That was the question that was asked, and that was what he was directed to answer.
And I think Randy just...
It's not, it's not in concrete. It's just, it's a negotiated, it's a negotiated item, and the board ultimately has the say in what it is, so... But this is what, if, if that contribution was that much money, that's what the rate is. That's all it is.
And the only way we can pay that rate is we lay it off somebody.
So, or make budget reductions in other areas.
And I think Randy answered the question. He just said, "That will be addressed after you've considered the legal opinion."
Right.
This was the question that was asked of me. You wanted the numbers? There are the numbers.
Mm-hmm.
I guess I'm a little...
And I didn't change anything other than those two numbers.
I guess I'm a little confused why there's so much concern about the costs on the water department's side, but now we're talking about the fire department and you don't wanna see it, so...
I don't think that was...
That's not what I said. I said, "I wanna know what effect it would have on the water department of an $80,000 decrease." That's what I asked.
And that's what you have in front of you.
Fire department.
On the fire department.
Fire department.
Okay, well, you, that, that was not the question that was asked at the last meeting.
Right.
And that was not the direction that we were given. And again, this is simply given to you for information. It's not a proposal. It's not a budget request. It's a simple answer to the question that was asked at the last meeting. What would the impact be on the water rate if that was the amount that was gone from the fire department? That was the question.
I guess trustee Pompo, any questions for Public Works or Fire Department?
That $100,000 you got back, Kurt, from the grant, does that affect your budget at all?
I haven't gotten it back yet.
Pardon me?
I have not received it yet.
Well, that you expect to, 'cause you've already spent $50,000 some odd dollars of it already, so you must be assuming we're gonna get it. So, does that have any effect at all on your...
It won't impact next year's budget.
That'd be a reimbursement to this year's budget's general fund, its fund.
You had, you had to somehow or another plan that $100,000 missing, no, correct?
No.
Well, we spent the hundred and some thousand dollars for winter repair that he never had.
It was...
So, it must've been planned somewhere along the line that he had to come up with it.
It came out of existing budget funds to be reimbursed. So, it's not gonna impact the 15 budget.
So, you put it all back, but you didn't put it all back in because you took 50 some thousand dollars and did the work on Fair Avenue, correct? Well, when do you get the money?
Right, yeah.
But you are, you are in the process of doing that job now.
Correct, yep.
And the other, the other money that's left over will be used for going back into the, your fund balance?
Or just go back to where it came from, yeah.
Okay.
Any, excuse me, Dan, any expected timeline on that grant reimbursement, Kirk?
They said as soon as they can, but that's probably gonna be, I don't, if they've got a deadline, I'm assuming it's like December 31st.
Yeah, it has to be released by the governor's office. Comes out of the governor's funds.
Plus, I think they have a budget year, so it might even be the end of their budget year, which is, I don't know when that is, October or...
The indic- the indication was, and it wasn't concrete, but the indication was that they recognize that community is in the budget processes now. You know, so the, the indication was that they're gonna try to expedite it, but it does have to come out of the governor's office. Obviously, they're waiting to see what the result of the election was, and now that we know what that was, I would expect it's gonna be fairly expedient, 'cause there are quite a few communities that are impacted.
Okay, as for the fire department, again, my whole complaint, and it's not, this, is this whole fee schedule for the new construction code is showing up as proposed, which tells me basically, again, I'll go back and say it, I don't, you can tell me that it's been used before, but if it was used before, there should've been a current price on it, not proposed price, so I'm assuming that, if, if all this money was out there somewhere, then it must've went somewhere, and nobody seems to know exactly where it went, so it's a total confusion factor for me, and I understand...
if, if all this money was out there somewhere, then it must have went somewhere, and nobody seems to know exactly where it went. So, it's a total confusion factor for me, and I understand it, that this is something that we're going to be doing. But, again, when you put it under a proposed, that tells me that it's something that you haven't done before. So, now you're telling me this is a new, what we're going to be charging for the rate scale. If it was done before, it should be unoccurring. Maybe just me, but I still have a major problem with that. Other than that, that's it.
Trustee LaRue, any questions?
Questions for, for Kirk. We just attended a road committee meeting, and if there was enough, if there ever was a time that we were going to need some extra help in the public works, it's going to be, it's coming three years. The residents have voted in a millage that do all the roads. Kirk's got the problem of trying to keep ahead of the roads' production, and it's going to be a very aggressive charge. And, because we can't do the roads until he gets his stuff done, because we're not going to go back and rip up the road and do it. So, if there is ever a time to do it, now's the time. For the next three years, we have to get our jobs done, plus any additional roads done. I don't have a problem with his, the rest of the schedule, I mean, his budget. We, he sort of stayed in line as far as what we said two years ago. The fire department, they need extra people for the same reasons, because they're all volunteer, and I don't have a problem with that either. I don't think we should play around with the, I think twenty thousand you just left alone, let do the same thing we did in previous years, and then if you want to get a study done or whatever you want to do. But I think we should leave it alone, pass the budget, and that's, because we got this road project coming up, and we don't need no stumbling blocks, because we're sort of rigged that we want the roads fixed up. We're going to get the roads fixed up. We're going to be more in control of it, of the roads, what's going to be happening, and we don't want to drop the ball. It's, it's really important to get these roads done, and the big thing is going to be his, and his, the wally walk to get all the sewer and water done in them roads before. Look at your schedule and see what roads we have to do. Ontario's going to be another one that they're going to do. He has to get all that stuff done, because we're not going to rip up roads. That's what we've been telling the people. So, if there ever, ever was a time to do it, now's the time. For, you know, I, I've said of other things about why, the reason for, you know, the both departments got the same reasons, so, you know, for expansion and getting new people trained and go through the, all the tests and stuff like that, and I, I don't see the big problem in it. He's balanced. The, both of them have balanced budgets. And the reason for extra people, I fully agree with it, but I just want to make sure that everyone understands that what we did with this road millage, we can't drop the ball. People put their faith in us. We proved it on Warner Street, and Brookton's taken care of, and now we've got a very big job, because we're worried about, as far as the road community is concerned, is that we got to hit in the spring with boots on the ground, so to speak, and get it done. We want to get everything done, and I hope Kirk is going to be able to have the manpower to get all that stuff done. So, I don't have a problem with either one of their arguments or what they need. I think they're within budget. Forget about this twenty thousand maybe for this year and discuss it after the budget's over and get going on the roads, and then go from there. They did what they said. They're supposed to have a balanced budget. They got it. You stay within a couple percent. The justification for adding two people or trying to get five more people for the fire department, you know, if it's your house, you want people there. You don't want to have to have people, especially if you've got volunteers, you know, some are working in the same reason that they brought up before, so... I just think, I think we should approve it, the budget, so... I'd like to see the water department put a little more emphasis on the water supply for Lake Superior. I wish we could find the money to get that pumping station in for them over there, so... That's, I guess that's, you know, you know how I feel about it, and I just, I just don't want this road project to drop. It's so important that we've been, you know, talking to all the people. They want it. We showed them how we can do it, get it done. We've already started with talking to the, Randy has talked to Waniki about engineering and stuff like that, so... It just makes me nervous that we have to do what the heck we said we were going to do. And by, by two more people in the water department can justify that, I think that's, that's fine with me. That's all.
Okay, I guess our next session's going to be Tuesday in the board, second half of the forum. Trustee Durant, would you like any additional information before Tuesday from either department head?
Yeah, I was guessing that maybe Lois was here to answer the question of where's the, where's the money? Where's, where's the fire fee money going? Can you identify which account that would have been being put in? All of the proposed... Okay, what, can you tell us which one? I have a feeling I know where it is, but I'd just like to hear it from you. That's, that's what I was thinking. That's what I circled. Okay. So, I guess what I don't understand then is why, why would we, why would we have, if you look at the history, sixteen thousand, then eight thousand, then six, and we're only budgeting twelve, or a thousand against twelve? I mean, that's, if, if we're going with rates that are going to be proposed, and assuming we're going to be collecting more money, why would we have less?
Well, part of that fee, or part of that revenue there is from car accidents and rescues that we do. So, now we're going to break that out, so you can, we'll know exactly how much we're getting from accidents and then parking, and then from plan review.
Based on the proposal, proposed rate incre, the...
The way it will, the invoice will be sent out and the spreadsheets we're going to have. So, you might just see here, charges for services, but that will be broke down on what charges they were. If it's plan reviews, three hundred dollars, say, if it's an accident on the highway and it's sixteen, eighteen hundred dollars, that would be all broke out. And we'll, that way we know how much we're getting from each.
Individual.
Yeah.
So, wouldn't you be asking for more budgeted then? That doesn't look like it'd be enough, twelve hundred, or a thousand dollars.
Well, it's revenue coming in.
Right.
Not knowing, not knowing what, you know, we might have two accidents we bill for and only get twelve hundred dollars. Or, you know, as of next year, say, if there's nobody's going to build, there's no plan review, we're not going to get no revenue. So, we bill our budget on the low side, because we really don't know.
Okay.
You know, like you said, if Up the Sky came in and all their plans, and they have eight different buildings, you know, you might be getting twenty-four hundred dollars for it. But if they don't come in, they don't do nothing. We're not going to get anything. Excuse me. It's just, we don't have a crystal ball. We don't know what's coming or what's going, and, you know, every time a building comes in, a big box door, any building, it gives, it's more work for us, and it costs us more money for that building than it does the water department, because we're not, if we get a three hundred dollar fee for a plan review, and that's all we get from them except for the tax money. But if they put in a twelve-inch main or a ten-inch main for a sprinkler system, you know, Kurt, that's a customer for Kurt for life. And it's a customer for us, but we're not getting, getting anything for, you know, except for the tax base. And I don't know what we get for, say, a Walmart, how much we get. You know, we don't get personal property tax. Well, there's no, no more, but... So, every time the township increases their water system, and Kurt does his study, and he wants more money, it's not because we're the fire department saying that they have to do it. You know, that's all done by building codes and by the state. So, whatever happens with the increases in buildings or property use, we have no say in it. The say, you know, the only say we have is, you know, we have very few things that we can do under our building code, or the zoning code that we fall under for the township. Life safety, turning radius, radiuses for the trucks to get in, fire lanes, where the fire department connection is, where the sprinkler system is, operation of it, and, you know, so for three hundred dollars to do a plan review for that, and it takes two weeks, we're not getting our full amount. But after that, the only thing we're receiving from them is our tax bill.
But you don't know what that is?
No.
You haven't figured that out?
You know, so, but...
But that could be more than what he's getting. So, you can't really argue that until you know what the number is.
Right.
But again, that's a forever as well, every year, two and a half mils and whatever the value is. The difference, I think the difference between the two is, is when, when Kirk, in building that building, when the infrastructure goes in, he has to maintain it for life. I mean, he has work that has to be done on it. Fire department on the other side only responds if there's an issue. So, you know, in terms of responsibility for continuing maintenance, it's, they're different. And, you know, and that's where the difference comes in. Kirk doesn't get any tax money. His revenue comes only from the services provided to the users.
So, the... No, I'm...
Well, that's why it's a, that's why it's a difficult nut to crack, because you've got two, you've got two different scenarios that the two departments operate under, and that's, that's why the legal opinion's been requested in terms of what is the relationship and what, what should it be, basically?
I was thinking about the twenty thousand.
Yeah, and that's, that's the point.
I'd already changed thoughts. As far as information from either... Probably not. What, your, your five people that you're expecting, three, or zero to five people, are they budgeted at all in here?
No.
I didn't think so.
And that was up to five, you know, and it's, we're looking at two, and we have room for one more, so we're looking at one additional one. That's what...
The cost, the cost going forward is a minimal cost. I mean, the chief has calculated the cost out. It's, it's very small in terms of, you know, in terms of the roll-up cost, you know, workers, there's a, was, there used to be a question about workers' compensation if you went above thirty. That's not the case anymore. It's just a flat, flat rate. Your workers' comp is just multiplied by however many people you have at a flat rate, basically. But the cost of, the cost of adding the volunteer staff and, you know, and their, their training is, it's a very small piece of the budget.
That's what I was doing, was making a comparison.
So, we did not include that in the two thousand fifteen budget. That, in my estimation, that would be not a, not an insignificant cost, but it's a, it's a, it's a cost that's not going to impact your budget, basically, one way or the other.
Remind me which of your increases are in here, then? I've got two question marks on here. You had talked about going with the dollar versus the two percent. You know, and whether or not we have employees or not, I'm kind of debating whether to consider this full-time, or not full-time, but permanent employees, even though they're on call. It's the way I have to qualify it with my staff versus someone who's an actual full-time employee.
Yeah, both of those rates are in the budget.
Okay, so...
You've got, you've got the, the department, department request column shows what the chief has requested, and my column shows the two percent.
That's what I thought, and that's why I wanted to make sure.
And it's also in the narrative.
Yeah, you know, and realistically, the, by law now, regardless of whether the volunteers are paid on call or whatever, they are considered employees of the township for all purposes. When the law changed. And now there's, there's another change to the law that's, that's going forward that may expand that a little more since the governor's been returned. So, we'll see, see where that all goes. But both, both, both of those options are, are in the budget.
Okay. Yep, I really don't have any more questions.
Okay, Treasurer Johnson, any information you'd like requested before the next budget session on Tuesday?
Well, same thing I've been asking for, some kind of justification for me to consider any of this stuff. Just to have a list of what they're responsible for is one side, but why they're not getting the job done is the next thing. And that goes back to project management. It goes back to management of what's going on and how much it takes to do every, every project and that, both manpower and equipment and that. So, for me to, to accept something just because someone needs two people or increase in dollars, that's against everything that I've had to done in my life and that. I've always had to come in a lot more detail in that. That's what I'm looking for in that. So, without that, and the other thing is, I mentioned last time, on the twenty-four cents on the solid, on the wastewater. I went through the budget. I couldn't see and justify in my mind twenty-four cent increase in that. When I went through the budget and looked at it, and I looked at it and looked at it, and I just could not come up with it. So, I've got to come up with something, or someone has to come up with something to show me the justification for a twenty-four cent increase on the wastewater rate. So, those are the things I'm looking for.
Okay, trustee Pompo?
Well, I, two comments and a question, I guess. One comment would be on Lynn's thing. You have to realize that when the department, fire department requested a raise, they haven't raised in four years.
Yep.
So, basically, if you take that, it's actually less than two percent
Yep, I know.
over that deal. So, second, I, I keep hearing the fact that the fire department makes out because they have, get the two and a half mils every year, and theirs goes up. But then again, I look at, if I look at the, as far as Kurt's concerned, between two thousand one and two thousand thirteen, his commercial sales tripled. So, or actually almost, almost four times, I should say, as well as his residential doubled. So, really, I mean, yes, the fact that, you know, Kurt does not apply to the two-point-five mils, but he is getting increases because of the water usage. So, you know, it's not like he's not gaining anything from this. My comment, what I would like to have, since trustee LaRue brought it up, I'd like to have a, from Kurt, I'd like to know exactly what these road reconstructions and everything else, exactly how that affects the water system, and what you plan on having to do with each one of these road constructions. If at, anything at all. And exactly, I'm going to assume that if there's any changes that are, have to be done, it's going to be done by the contractor, not our people. Because obviously, they're not down in the hole when they're reconstructing the, the roads. And I'd just like to know exactly, over the next three years, what these changes that, that we might have, we might or might not have to do. Again, I don't know. So, since trustee LaRue brought up the road thing, I'd like to see exactly what we have to do with each one of those roads, because being constructed over the next three years, if anything.
Okay, so that's, that's probably going to be quite a bit of information, but I imagine you have some of that, right, Kirk, with your reliability study and things?
Well, actually, that's already been presented in the budget. Okay, those attachments were replacement and improvement. Okay, the improvement part is the, is the part that we're working on right now. Those will be the extensions, like in Turbridge Park and South Vandaboom.
But, but I think what trustee Pompo is looking for next year is, you know, we know kind of what the schedule is for next year for, you know, the replacement and construction. And just to kind of come up with a list of what your needs are, because you're going to have to do it anyway, what your needs are for that current, you know, for next year. I mean, are you, like you said, Ontario. Now, you told us tonight we're going to private to do a main there, so that would be something...
And something I added to the replacement improvement was a... And something I added to the replacement improvement was a number date on the South Vandaboom, okay, water and sewer, and sewer for Grandview Circle, okay? That was added to the previous list. So I've had pretty much the same long-term plan for a while. And in terms of the, the road improvements that are occurring, where we already have existing infrastructure, what we've been doing there, depending on the, the nature, if it's a complete reconstruct, what we've been doing is replacing hydrants and valves in the water system.
Well, and I think that's what Dan's looking for, he's looking for just...
And that's never been in the budget.
No, I know.
That's kind of what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Well, true, it's in the budget, but, but if you look at the road repair, road construction thing for next, for next three years...
Yep.
Can you break out...
Yeah.
Under that, exactly what each one of those, the water department's going to be required to do in each one of those? And, and obviously, if it's a chip seal, it's not going to be anything done.
Right.
But a reconstruction, I would like to, I'd like to have a, a, an idea of what exactly is that we're going to be doing if they're doing a reconstruction. And if that's been planned for, I'm assuming you must have it planned for in some place in the, in your fund balance or in your fund somewhere to do this, that's going to be a lot of work for you to do, to tell me where you're going to get the money from. But right now, or how much it's going to cost, right now, I want to know exactly, just exactly what it is that has to be done, you know, for each one of the road reconstructions that is in the master road plan.
Yeah, and most likely, it's only going to be, the only ones that are going to really impact that are the ones that are going to be reconstructions, the, the overlays and the chip seals. You're, you're right, Trustee Pompo, the overlays and chips, chip seals aren't going to impact the subsurface at all, but if they're disturbing the, the surface and getting down to redo bed and things such as that, that's when Kirk is going to be looking at replacing valves and hydrants and those kinds of things, as long as they're exposed, particularly if they're older, so we don't have to go back in and tear, you know, our objective is not to tear these roads back up again, you know, to do any kind of subsurface work unless we have a failure. I mean, unless there's a freeze or a break or something like that. But routine maintenance, we want to avoid any of that in the future, so we don't have to break the surface of the roads.
So again, any, any reconstruction, starting next year and predicted into the next two years after that, exactly what you're going to be doing?
And some of the stuff, for example, again, we have replacement and we have improvement. In the budget, it's one line item. I've given you spreadsheets that break that out into replacement.
I, and I understand that.
Yeah.
I understand that. But my question is, Trustee LaRue brought up the, the comment that his feeling that we need to have extra people because of all this work that needs to be done with this new road construction. I'd just like to know exactly what that work is under reconstructed road and what you have to do and who does what. That's my question. And that's, that's what I'd like to...
Yeah, I think the question you need to answer, Kirk, is what is this road construction activity going to do to your demands in combination with what your routine projects are? The things you still have to do with water and sewer, what additional are you going to have to do with the roads? And that's, I think that would answer Ernie's question as well, in terms of, you know, what it is, what, what is the extra work over the next three years that's going to be done with regard to this road project in addition to what your normal work activity is? And what, what will that demand of staff?
Does that satisfy you, Trustee Pompo?
Yes.
Okay. Trustee LaRue, any...
That was a question I was going to ask. And also, when we talk about chip and seal, we want majority of any work that has to be done on that road before you even do the chip and seal, be done before we do that, because we don't want to go over the top of it, rip it up again. That's, that's not the object of what we want to do. That's, the project is that we're going to fix everything, try to keep ahead of the paving, and then chip and seal it or reconstruct it or whatever it's going to take, but we just don't want to dig up that road.
Well, let, let me change my request then. Any work that has to be done at any one of the roads, I'd like to know what it is.
Yes, yes, Trustee Durant.
Um, I'm concerned about, not that everyone isn't entitled to information, because I want, if I wanted it, I would expect it too. I'm concerned at what depth we're going to make Kirk dig into this. There are justifiable questions, I'm not saying they aren't, but how much time do you want him, how, how in-depth do you want him to get? And what impact is that going to have on your decision to pass this budget? If he comes to you and says, "It's going to take two extra people to do this and $400,000 that I'm not expecting," what are you going to do? Are you going to say, "Okay, we're not going to pass your budget, we want you to redo it?" Or are you going to say, "No, you can't have the person, you're going to have to do it with what you got, and you can't have an increase"? I mean, how, how much emphasis are you going to put on the information you get and what are you going to do with it?
Well, I mean, we've heard from some board members, they want that information, and I can't, you know, I can't withhold that from them. If that's what they want...
I agree.
They, they have a right to that.
But I'm just wondering how, does he have enough direction to know how in-depth he has to get?
Well, I think, I'll get to you, excuse, one minute here, Trustee Pompo. I think he's heard what the board members had to say, and, and hopefully, he has enough direction to produce some of that. I don't know if he's going to get all of it, because it is pretty in-depth in some of it, and I agree. And we all have different needs, you know, and myself, I don't need the depth that some people do on some items. On some other, other items, I do, because I'm not, you know, an expert on that. But he's been requested to provide it, and the board members have requested it, and he has to, you know, that's technically his job to do it. He, you know, and he, I mean, he's going to have to produce it and might not be next meeting, because it is very in-depth, but he is going to work on it and get, you know, as much done as he can. And, you know, I don't know if that's going to change anyone's opinion, but I hope it would. But, Trustee Pompo?
Well, and, and the only reason I brought it up again is because Trustee LaRue brought up the fact that, that's one of his reasonings for hiring more people. And I, I guess if, if, if it's too much to do, then that's fine, I guess. You know, my decision will be made without it. It's just, I, I, you know, I didn't, I didn't bring up the fact that we need to hire two more people because all this work's being done on the roads.
That wasn't yet.
Well, yes, it was.
No, it's not.
Whatever, you know, if it's going to be that much of a problem, and, and I don't have a problem with it, he doesn't really have to do it, really, it's...
Well, I mean, I...
And you don't need it, not at all, because, like I said, to start out with, if I had requested this, I would expect the information. I didn't get from either of you how in-depth, that's all I'm asking. Does he have enough direction, was my question?
But all, all I originally asked was, was, was if we're going to be doing road construction, redoing, exactly what is it required from the water department to do? That's all I'm asking. I mean, I don't know how many roads we set up for next year for construction, one, two, maybe, whatever. So is it, is it, what is it we're going to be doing? Are we going to re-up all the mains? Are we going to replace whatever we're going to replace? I, I, that, I don't think should be that difficult. I'm just asking exactly what it is that we're going to be doing. So, you know, if, and then Trustee LaRue brings up, well, if we're chip sealing, we're going to be, you know, we can't, we got to do all this stuff for it before we chip seal, well, then that's going to be more stuff then. So it's just basically, my, my question is, is, I, you know, the voters approve the, the road millage, and I don't have a problem with that. My question is, is how is it going to affect the water department? Is that going to really get into the budget, say, at the end of it? Because obviously, that's going to be a lot of work and a lot of more money that I don't think was originally planned short-term as we're doing it. Might have been planned down the road, but did your budget and your, your income balance out a major road work for the next three years that you have to now also do major water and sewer work with? That's my question.
Manager Gerard?
Okay, first of all, the recommendation for the staff increase had nothing to do with the three-year road project.
That's what I figured.
It was not the reason. The reason was, we have maintenance issues in our current system that are not being addressed. You know, and in, in terms of documenting, you know, how it's not happening, we can do that, we'll do that, it's not a problem, we'll do that. The, the issue is, and the very simple computation of that is, how many hours do you have to cover? And how many staff does it take to cover that with two to a team? That's, that's the answer to your question, Treasurer Johnson. How do you provide the 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week service to the water system and the sewer system with four people? Without getting into major overtime, without getting to call, and we're trying to avoid all of those issues? And that's, that was the rationale behind the request for the staff. Now, with regard to the three-year road project, it's going to put additional taxing on everybody in the township. Fire department's going to be tasked, because there are going to be areas that they're going to have to reroute their emergency routes while it's going on. Administration's going to be tasked, because we're overseeing the project. Kirk's going to be tasked, because he's going to be looking at the project and doing some subsurface work where it's required. Whether that's done before a chip seal is done is not the committee's decision, that's the engineer's decision. So, those things, then, the decision is, do we do that with staff or is that part of a contract? Do we contract that out? We can calculate very easily, if, if staff does it, how much time that's going to require and equate that to a dollar amount. It's not a problem to do that. There are construction standards that are out there, schedules that are out there that say to do this work should take this many hours, per hundred feet or 50 feet, whatever it is. So once we identify, once the engineers have the project designed, we'll know what we need to do. Kirk can then look at his infrastructure and determine what of it is new enough to not bother with and what of it is on that verge of being old enough that we're going to have to deal with it in the next five to seven years, and he'll replace it at that time, just like we did on Werner Street. Not everything on Werner was replaced. So that's the way this project will be, will be approached over the next three years of the construction project. And Dan's absolutely right, it's not full major construction all three of the years. The major construction is basically upfront, and then we'll be doing the other things as it goes on. So most of that is going to be in the first year or two, and it is not incorporated in this budget.
Yeah, the connection between Public Works and the, this road proposal is mainly going to be, I mean, there is going to be additional labor required, just like Miss Diggs and just helping to oversee the project, basically locating stuff for contractors. But we're not doing the construction work, okay? It's the construction work that we are going to be required to do in terms of replacing hydrants and valves and extending mains, both water and sewer mains, in already identified districts. That, that's the main cost. That's way more than any labor. What it's going to do is increase the maintenance, the operating, the maintenance requirements that I'm telling you we can't keep up with right now. And you ask about, well, can't you just manage the people differently? Absolutely, you can manage people any way you want, okay? But we have assumed that the, the main, we're going to try to meet the customer demand, okay? So if somebody calls with a problem, okay, we're not going to tell them, "Well, we'll get to you when we get to you." We respond within minutes. At the most, it might be an hour or two. That, that's been our number-one mission. And what we're required to do by the DQ, our regulators, is to provide clean water under pressure 24/7. And we're doing that as well. That's where we're kind of borderline in terms of maintenance.
I think, following up on Dan, I think, and not even on Pete, do we know at this point in time which roads we're going to be working on next year? So that's the biggest crunch right now, is looking at those roads to see what's going to be done with them, not only on paving, but what's going to be done under the, under the paving. So that would be the first thing to do, is look at those, those roads and what's all going to be involved. And it may be very little, it may take, you're talking about chip seal, and you really look at it, you may not have to do it, you may end up doing a full, full works, once you look at it all, and that...
The engineering.
Yeah, so, but those are the things you have to look at, is you pick out this road, I don't care what it is, and look at it. If it's a chip seal, and you look at it, we don't have to do anything underground except for this and this, it's relatively inexpensive.
Mm-hmm.
But a chip seal may look at this road and say, "Hey, it's been there, we may have to do all this." So, when you look at the, the actual roads that you're talking about, is going to determine what the costs are going to be for that. You have a copy of the three-year plan, Ernie?
I may have.
Okay, if not, I can get you one, I mean, just to take a look at it, so... But is that, is that going to be, is that in concrete right now?
Manager Gerard?
Yeah, Treasurer Johnson, you're absolutely correct. The roads that are going to be subject to chip seal are newer roads, they're in better condition. So the infrastructure under them is newer infrastructure. Where we're going to run into most of what's going to impact Public Works is on the older roads that are going to be reconstructions. And, you know, and those, basically, in those areas where there, where there are utilities, which is most of, most of Trowbridge and most of the roads, where there are utilities, there are the older utilities, and those are the ones that we're concerned about, and it would be in the first year, probably, we would be hitting those roads, because that's where the major reconstruction is going to be. As you get to the roads that are basically just chip seals and crack seals, those are generally newer roads, you know, so the infrastructure is newer infrastructure, there may or may not need to be addressed, and that, you know, that's, you don't know that until you get to it and, and take a look at it.
My estimation is, you know, we did have that three-year plan, and I, I know we have identified roads for next year already, so that probably will be addressed and...
Yeah, it's a good plan, and I fully support the plan, just like the majority of the people in the township. But the county, okay, it hasn't even been engineered yet.
Right.
And the county will be engineering, and that's a lot of work on their part.
Yes.
Okay? And they're going to involve me as part of that process.
Right, it will, it will be part of the planning process, and we're about to start that. We're writing off coordinating calendars for all the people that are involved, the road commissioner, drain commissioner, and all the people that are involved or would be involved in this project to sit down and start that design process. But, you know, that, I think what we'll do is, just in case, does anybody else need a copy of the maps? Like, we can send the maps back out to you, it's not a big deal. We, we do have one out in the lobby as well, but they're broken up basically over the three years, and far and away, the bulk of the construction, the reconstruction is in the first year, 2015.
Okay, well, my final comments of the evening is, we'll have a budget session next board meeting in the second forum. And also, I did notice the closed session is after that, so we will talk about that issue in the closed session. December 3rd, I believe, is our next board meeting. We will have, we do have to have a public hearing that night on the budget, that doesn't mean that it, it's approved budget, it just has, the public has their chance to comment on it, correct?
Correct.
And then our timeline moves to, we have to have a balanced budget by the end of the year. And, and it's November 13th today, and so we are moving towards that date, and all I can say is, I mean, we can have more meetings, but if you're not comfortable with the budget and you're not, don't want to pass it, vote no, and, you know, bring solutions and hopefully move forward with it. That's all I can say. So with that, I'm going to close. One more comment of the evening, Manager Gerard?
Is this a YouTube meeting?
Yes, it is.
Okay, just, just a quick comment, before we close, two quick comments before we close, since this will be on YouTube. First of all, I want to thank, since both department heads are here, I want to thank and personally recognize both, the fire department and the Public Works, for their efforts over the last two days in this snowstorm. The two of them were working together to keep the fire department open, to keep Public Works open, and, you know, and they worked well, very well together. I think they should be commended for that, and I'll bring that up at the board meeting as well, but that was one comment. And the second comment is, you're absolutely right, the, the budget schedule is for a public hearing at your meeting on December 3rd, because it has to be 15 days, minimum 15 days before the close of the budget, the adoption of the budget and put into effect. So, and we still have to advertise that. But that does not preclude the board, if you're not comfortable with the budget at that point, from scheduling special meetings. You know, so we have to, we have to publicly advertise for the public hearing, but we need a, a consensus budget, basically, before we can do that, and that has to be 15 days before the public hearing. So we're getting close to that timeframe.
Yeah, we need to publish that soon, so at least we have the, so we can have the public hearing. And like I said, I remember a few years ago, we weren't comfortable with the budget. We did pass it, but then in January, we did, you know, we, we did adjust it again, but I would think, you know, we have a consensus budget and we just move forward with it, and, you know, 2015, we'll have some topics to discuss, I believe.
And if any, if any board members have any questions or...